We are.
Okay, hello Wakefield, welcome to our town council meeting of eight of August fourteenth. It is six P M. I call this meeting into order. I am joined by all my counselors in the room and Councilor Chrisley online. We will move on to the first agenda item. With our interview of Liz. Yes, Hartsgrove.
Okay.
Yes.
Where are you?
Yeah, Stacey. Good to you.
And listen to.
Again.
Have a seat.
I'm a hot seat here, huh? And Councilor Chrisley is online, right?
Yes.
Good evening.
Hi, welcome. Thank you so much for coming in today. And so the way that we've been doing these is we would love if you just kind of do a brief three to three minute introduction of yourself and why you're interested in this position, kind of run through your background and why you applied for this position. And then we have a, we are a seven member board, so each member will ask you two questions.
Okay.
And so we hope to get done within an hour, an hour. So brevity is great, but answer the questions.
Thank you.
Yeah, and then we'll, you know, if you've. Yeah, well, we'll try to get done in an hour. That's the plan that we've been going on.
We will use our time management skills.
We will. We'll see how well we can all follow directions. So please introduce yourself.
So, well, before I do that, I just wanted to thank, I know you understand and notice and recognize your search committee being amazing people. But I have to say to all of you while I have you in person that they were extremely gracious and generous with their welcoming to me. And they left me in a state of mind that I wanted to be part of this team. So I want to let you know that your volunteers really demonstrated your mission, your core values, and I really am thankful for that. So, thank you. And for the viewers at home, my name is Liz Hartsgrove, and I currently serve as the Assistant Town Administrator for the Town of Born. I've done that for about three years now. My career began shortly after, my municipal career shortly began after I received my Bachelor's in Fine Arts from Southern Methodist University. I began my municipal career in Provincetown in two thousand two as licensing agent. I was there for four years and I was there at an amazing time as a young person. Fresh out of college and I was in charge of overseeing seven hundred licensed businesses. And supporting the licensing authority. And not just supporting them administratively, but also code compliance. I was writing policy and procedures. I was helping businesses. I was supporting the Business Guild as well as the Chamber of Commerce. I was going door to door, talking to people about the soon to be abatements that were going to be going in the sewer system that they were soon voting on. I was working with them also on fixing, helping them, talk to them about their work visas. The, that their workers were coming in and not getting visas at the time, also not being able to find housing. At the time around, I was there from two thousand two to two thousand six. And at the time, affordable housing and workforce housing had kind of a name, but it didn't really have an identity. People knew that something was happening, but they didn't know exactly what. The land values were just going crazy out the, out, this was right before the housing crisis, the crisis, the bubble burst. So, single family residents who had been there their entire lives were being offered exorbitant amounts of money. And their single family homes overnight were turning into condos and then being into timeshares. And so we were losing a lot of the fabric of what Provincetown was at the time. And also, at the time, people were also buying historic homes and knocking them down. So in reaction, Provincetown pulled together and created a Historic Commission, which I also assisted with the businesses in the community for. From all of those experiences within the four years that I was there, I really was recognized for being a leader and bringing people to the table. And having a real strong skillset of seeing things in different perspectives. And, and so I was encouraged to move forward with pursuing a town manager career, town administrator career. So as you'll see from my resume, I spent three years in Wellfleet and then shortly after that, I went to Yarmouth and worked there for five years. And I began working in procurement. I oversaw for both of those towns, the operational and capital budget, budget building and getting it passed at town meeting. Developing articles for town meetings, supporting the select board and the town administrator, as well as the finance director. And being the conduit for getting, getting tasks and projects to implemented and began and then sustained. So from all of that, I got recognized in Barnstable for that skillset because Yarmouth and Barnstable are neighbors. And we had a lot of negotiation. We had a lot of intermunicipal agreements, especially with trash and other types of services and water as well. And I was recognized sitting at negotiating tables and they said, I want you to join our team. So I did. I was there for eight years and as you can see from my resume, I shifted between three different positions. And the reason for that was because I was literally assigned to take problems, fix them, get them into, create systems, and then get them working and hand it off and then go to the next department that had issues with building that had silos that didn't have good cooperative skillsets that really had some rub and friction. And I was brought into those departments to kind of level it out and see the bigger picture and put systems into place. From then, I knew that it was time, like any good leader, you know, when it's time to move on and that you're not challenged anymore. So I joined Born's team and hence also then why I'm here. Because that's pretty much the same thing. I'm ready for the next challenge. So I hope I'm timely in my response. That's a long resume, I understand.
No, that's great. Thank you for highlighting your experience in this. We are going to start with questions and I'm going to go to Councilor Butler first.
Okay. Well, I, you know, I guess, I guess I will start by asking you to address the elephant in the room. Is you are, we are, we have had somebody here in town who is local and we've, we've historically never had a non-local town administrator.
Yeah.
And you are coming from far, far away. And I, you know, I work for Rockland Trust, full disclosure, so I know the Cape. It's address, how would you become? And how comfortable are you becoming a member of this community and really being, maintaining an active presence here?
Yeah, that's, that is a very valid question, Doug. And I'm not pulled off in any way from it. Okay, so, um. First of all, my family is extremely supportive of this decision. I would not be sitting here if I did not actually, I wouldn't have applied. All right, unless my family was a hundred percent on board. Okay, and I'll just lay it out for you. I have an older daughter who, I have a stepdaughter who's twenty seven, just got married. She's no longer with us, obviously, right? She's not living at home. I have a middle child of my, my own, my oldest, she's in college in Scotland. And my youngest is a senior in high school. My husband, after twenty eight years with the National Park Service Law Enforcement, retired two years ago to play Mr. Mom, basically. He was done with the Park Service and he works part-time at Trader Joe's. So, we have crafted our lives for this moment for me. Okay, and because with the National Park Service for twenty, we were married for twenty-three years. And for the last twenty-three years of him being in the Park Service, he would get called out for a year at Minuteman. Six months out in Wyoming. At a Native American Reservation, he'd be called out in Arizona for six months. This is not unfamiliar territory for my family. And I have raised my children also to be extremely supportive of me. I would not be setting the right example and the tone and being an example for them. I tell them to pursue your dreams. And if I didn't do this, I wouldn't be speaking the truth for them and being a representative of that. So my plan is to be here and be present and then my family will join me or I will join them, however it works, it may not work. And then my husband will definitely join me after my youngest is in college and he can be up here.
Thank you.
Councilor Constance.
I was intrigued by a mention on your resume of design thinking methodology.
Yeah.
I, I'm not familiar with that term and so you can tell us what it is, but I'd be more curious to know how that thinking principle you would bring to Wakefield and, and how that would work.
Sure, actually, I've written several papers on it and spoken about it at Suffolk and UMass on it. And, and I am very passionate about finding different examples and ways of going about planning and implementing and getting new ways of thinking. And actually, the federal government has utilized design thinking in some way or another. The Veterans Affairs actually has utilized design thinking to tailor their needs and design of a process of services. So services are delivered in three ways. They're delivered by its people. So whether it be volunteers, employees, elected board members, even vendors are a conduit of how an organization is run. You, they're representatives of the values, right? If you don't like the way that a vendor is operating, you're not going to do business with them any longer, right? So that is one way of doing business. And another one is, excuse me, delivery of services. And then another one is the process, the regulations, the policies that you, that you adopt and even town meeting. Those are ways of a process. And then the third is also the place, your vehicles, the town hall, the town buildings, your roads and infrastructure. So when you were talking about design thinking, you were thinking about it very comprehensively. And you are going to look at who the individual is that you're going to be serving and what is it that service is going to actually be giving and providing? Is it aligned with the goals and objectives that you have as an organization? So if you are, let's say that you have the public works, which is right across the hall, right? And they are, they are having, I don't know, a curb cut form. And is the, design thinking actually follows the customer viewpoint through the process? And you see how easy it is or how, how were the barriers and boundaries and, and looking at it in different perspectives? Is somebody actually having any types of abilities or challenges getting access online? How is it the colors? Like you look at all of those things and, and so that's a simple way of putting it, but there are steps in the process. And then as you get towards the end and you launch it and you do, you initiate the process, you basically throw it out as a pilot program. And then you do an after action review. So you pull it back to the very beginning and you start from the start, beginning and you look at who your user group is. You create basically an identity of the, the traditional customer that you have. And then you follow their footsteps through, so. Councilor Carney.
And I think you might have already answered this, I think. The issue is you, right now you're living in Born.
I live in Yarmouth Port.
Yarmouth Port, okay.
Yeah, so it's even further on the Cape. Against Liz.
I worked in Worcester and the hour and a half drive killed me for fourteen years. So how would you, how would you deal with that? Are you, I guess I'm, I'm going to ask a question outright, are you willing to relocate?
Yes, I am.
Okay.
I've already been looking. Councilor Fox.
Sure, so I'll skip that question, obviously. So I saw that you are currently the Department Head for Facilities, Operations and Born.
Yeah.
How many people fall under you currently? And the reason I ask is our previous town administrator had twenty-one direct reports. So wondering how things are divided currently in Born and your leadership structure and what you would do here to maybe not have twenty-one direct reports.
Well, I don't know if twenty-one direct reports is a bad thing. So I'd have to answer that as far as getting into it and seeing how they operate and then making that decision if it actually works. Or if I, if, there's no, no reason to fix something that isn't broken, right? And it would be me that's coming in and I'm the different denominator on this whole thing. So, but to answer your question, Born has, it's a smaller community. And it's smaller in population only year round. We're twenty, a little over twenty thousand year round, but we blossom up to fifty thousand during the summer. And, but it's very small and mighty as far as workforce. It is a different community completely. So I actually, it has a different set of values. It has, it's just a hundred percent different than Wakefield as far as an example. My preference would be that I use an example as far as Barnstable. Okay, because even though it's fifty thousand year round, population of forty-eight, and then it blossoms up to two hundred during the summer. And that doesn't include the day trippers. It is a much bigger organization similar to this. And under my direction, I had over twenty direct reports to me in Consumer Affairs for the four years. And then in Planning and Development, it's shimmyed down to, I actually didn't, escalated up even further. I went to almost thirty people. And then in Asset Management, it actually did shimmy down to about seven people. Currently in Born, I will answer your question, currently in Born, I have eight employees that work directly for me. One seat is vacant and that is the facilities manager, which, so I'm doing both, I'm wearing both hats right now. So, but yes, I am fine with that many report, with that many direct reports. And again, it depends on the situation, Brian. It's, if it's something that I have to be really involved in, it is something that is a top priority of the council, then I am going to be involved with it. And I need to be involved with having an oversight and performance management of them and also performance review of them. So I think it's very important that I have my finger on the pulse and have that open line of communication and flattening out the organization that way. At least I find it a benefit initially for me to be introduced to the, the organization.
Great, thank you.
Okay. Councilor Chrisley.
Oh, good evening, Liz.
Hi.
Sorry, can't be there in person. You know, my, what, draw my attention to your cover letter for the, the administrator position.
Yeah.
We talked about strategic planning, housing diversity, civic engagement and downtown capital projects. So my question for you is from the communities that you've worked in. When there are major development projects, there's a big envision project. Under planning, just a big field. How do you, how have you worked with the past with conflicting agendas? Some people like design changes, some people like the roads being rebuilt and others don't.
Yeah.
How have you responded to those different constituencies?
That's a great question. And it's no stranger of that type of difference of opinion on the Cape. We have people that are proud to say that they are descendants of the pilgrims. And then we also have residents and citizens in our community that are even further back in the Wampanoag Tribe. So we have a very, and we also have newer residents that are, are open, more open to change. We have on the Cape, especially in Barnstable, there is a growing number of Brazilian community members. And they are very active and rightly so, we're very happy about that. So it is, it's a challenge, John. I will admit that, but that is actually what makes government so wonderful, that you get this difference of opinion. And I embrace that and I encourage it because that means we're doing our job correctly. We're actually getting them engaged and they feel comfortable to share that with us. And then it is our job and is my job to actually make sure that that is something that you get, that information, that you see the difference of opinion. You see how it affects people personally. They're not, they're literally faces and people that are living and breathing and working and, and having emotions and enjoying memories and moments and building a life in your community. Why would we want to hinder their, their those opinions and perspectives? It's just going to maybe elongate the process a little bit or, but we will find a compromise. And I think that again, that's where municipal government really shines, is that we are face to face. We're living with people that have differences of opinions. We can't hide from that and we will get a better product in the end. So I, examples of that, definitely I've had in Barnstable predominantly, as well as even in Born with our library project that I just got the O P M and the design money approved for. There was a strong sentiment about having this historic, it's not historic, it's just old building that people deem historic. And because it's sentimental to them and some people, it was a former school. So some people actually remember going to elementary school there. And so the discussion is whether or not you have a building that is about to collapse. Literally, we had to stabilize the front of the facade of the building so it wouldn't crumble onto our patrons when they walk in. So we have basically eight years left to make a decision. And we made a decision through the strategic plan and a feasibility study, which I actually facilitated and led the conversation and got almost a thousand people to really chime in and get an opinion and then get the money to, and the support overwhelmingly at town meeting to move forward with actually knocking down the building and starting all over. So I think because we have those open discussions and also putting together plans of how to actually get the word out and disseminate actual information that's very honest and true. And the people can then make their decisions from that. But once you, it's all about planning and getting, again, the information out and having easy access to it. So I hope that answers your question.
Uh, thank you. I mean, that was some valuable, valuable background from your experience. Thank you, Liz.
Thank you. Councilor Chimes.
Thank you. You know, you referenced when you, you're responding to Councilor Fox's question, you know, performance management. And I want to dig into that a little bit more. Could you describe for us what you would envision as sort of the, the best practice performance management and goal setting process? That if you were in the town administrator role, you'd have in place with, with us as a town council?
Yeah.
And then, you know, conversely, you know, looking at your role as a leader in town hall, what would you plan on implementing as a performance management process for, not only for your direct reports, but for the organization as a whole?
And I just want to be clear, performance management, not performance review.
Well, so I think performance management is inclusive of a performance review process, but I'd, I'd like you to kind of dig into that a little bit.
Yeah, performance review is kind of like an annual or biannual thing. And there are goals set in it, like you said, there is kind of want, it goes hand in hand, but it's kind of an afterthought. Because performance review is after things happen, it's not during and before. And what, in setting clear expectations of how to deliver any type of goal or objective or task that's been assigned to you. Performance management though, and that's why I wanted to make sure that I was clear on where you were going with this. So I am very big with, with having goals and laying out a plan and tasks and actually setting metrics. And what is it that you want to achieve in three, six, nine, and so on, number of months, twenty-four months and so on? And then literally tasking out who is assigned, who is working together on these types of projects and involving them in conversations and being very involved with it on check-ins. So it is my job to actually carry out the goals and objectives that you have, that you voted on, actually, was it May twentieth? And I, I actually put together kind of nine general kinds of overlying topics of what they are. And so getting more clarification as to what you want to achieve within those, then I would have better, like, a path that I can plan out. And, and do those check-ins and then keep you involved with it and have departments come in and check in on that. Those are performance, that's performance management, is making sure that any of the actions and tasks that are assigned to a department or even myself and even for you, for our discussions, that we keep the mission and the core values in the forefront of all of the decision making. Once you have that foundation, Jonathan, then really those decision making, those decisions are really comes more natural. And, and that's why I actually like kind of our flatter design because you allow people that are, have the responsibility to make the decisions in there. And then as long as they keep me informed and then I keep you informed, that chain of command is really essential when it comes to performance management. So that's really how I would do it. I have, I'm, I'm, to elaborate, I'm sorry, with your time, I'm trying to be mindful of that. But I like to actually meet with my, my department heads every other week. Because especially if there's twenty-one, I will have them at set times. It could be fifteen minute check-ins. It doesn't have to be a full hour. I do all the time, set schedule time for my department heads every other week. And when I was in Barnstable, that was completely a hundred percent. They would know that they would have me during that hour. If I didn't see them and if we didn't text or say that, I don't need you this week, okay, that's great. And then I would continue with my work. But they knew that they had me for that hour if they needed to and vice versa. And I knew that they had that scheduled on them. I would have full team meetings at least once a month. Agenda reviews are at least prior to the agenda being set. So we would have all of that information. I would be prepared so then you are prepared. And that is really also what performance management is about. It is making sure that you have all the information that your staff that you have hired as professionals pull together a professional product for you. So you can have that final decision. Thank you.
Thank you.
And so I'm looking at the size of Born and, you know, the employee sign is, employee number is kind of born, born. You have two more select or town counselors here.
Yeah.
Born. But the range, you know, when you have their summer seasonal population is the same, but we are not the Cape, we're metro north, very different communities. Can you talk about some of the, where you see your biggest growth challenges will be if you get this position? Being that it's not a Cape town and it's a suburb, you know, ten miles from Boston?
Well, um. I think that not the biggest challenge. I'm, I honestly, I don't think that they're, they're tires on a wheel, but they're just different company. They're not Goodwill, they're Pirelli or whatever it is, it's still tires. I'm not trying to say that affordable housing is not different in Wakefield than it is in Born. Luckily, I do have experience working in MBTA community because Born is one. It's not, it's not a direct line, it's not, it's not, in your classification, it is an adjacent small community. But it is the only town on the Cape that is MBTA and we are going through that right now. We are finishing up in that isolated for the fall town meeting. So I have, I have experience working with the town planner in those discussions and making sure, and talk about performance management. You, you are checking in with them, making sure that it is an elected board, that the town planner is keeping an elected board in line with the mission and goals of the actual select board. And that is a very challenging thing. I feel that that is where I do see, Maureen, some of the challenges. We'll see, kind of see where those dynamics are in interrelational of the, of the different elected bodies of how is your relationship with the Board of Trustees for the library? How is it with your water commissioners and so on and so on? Board of Health also, are you, are they aligned with your economic development goals? Or are they hindering it? And do they have that information as to what they're doing or what they are not doing? That is preventing businesses from actually feeling welcome in this community and aligned with your actual mission statement? So I think that is something that I'm going to see, but it's not anything that's not going to, I don't see it as, as a barrier. And I've changed communities five times already. Provincetown is completely different than Born. They have different issues. But really what it comes down to are the basic human needs are always the same. People want to be heard, they want to be part of the community, they want a house, they want good education. And, and so the basic human needs are always the same. But again, they just have different personalities in different communities. So I just need to learn the person. So I just need to learn the personality of Wakefield.
Thank you. Counselor Butler.
Round two.
Round two.
Okay.
Started off with the easy one.
Come on, bring it.
No, 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 I'm actually not. I'm not going hard. No, I think you do have, you know, you have very strong background and you're very facile around like explaining, you know, the operational side of things and also mapping out. And I think you, you know, I, you know, this is where I'd like a two hour interview because I'd love to hear the nine part plan or the nine pieces and the representations of that.
I didn't bring my binder with my full plan.
But I guess I'm going to touch on another area and you can talk to me a bit about this. We probably have a fair bit of your senior leadership turning over. I don't think you'll end up with 21 direct reports because I think that was back in the days when before we had the deputy town administrator as well. So I don't know that he had enough feeding into him. But you'll have some changes to make as well as can you talk about how you approach sort of the mentoring and the leadership aspect of it? Again, you come off as an exceptional performer and now it's a question of like, are you the right strategic thinker? And you're doing well so far in terms of like thinking about how you think about developing those underneath you.
Absolutely. Okay, so not a hard question. So I'm a little bummed. Come on, Doug. So I I will tell you. Okay, so from the get go in Provin, I'll use my starting point as Province Town. When I began in 20 in 2002, we were still using a typewriter to type out the licenses. And the forms were all handwritten or not handwritten, but they were Xerox copied. And then you had to mail everything out to 700 businesses. Think of the postage. And think of also it being only 2,800 population to 35,000 population. There are, um, I believe over 150 liquor licenses there. And everybody is at the Palmas, California, New York City and everywhere. So I went from a typewriter to actually figuring out how to make forms online, PDF, gathering emails and putting it all electronically, sending it out, cutting down financial expenditures in my budget, nearly slashed probably three quarters of it. And it made it so much more efficient. Also, I created an archival database that I had all of these records online. And this was starting basically in 2003 that I started doing this. And scanning things in, narrowing down the files also and being prepared for the next generation of the licensing agent coming in. I knew I wasn't going to be the last person ever. Province Town in the 1700s, right? And in Barnstable, 1639, I wasn't the first person and I'm certainly not going to be the last person. So I have to make sure that is my responsibility as an employee. That's how I feel is that it is our responsibility to to make a town like Wakefield better for the next generation that is going to come. So I have already I already do that. I set up everything. I look at efficiencies. I look at ways to improve things, but I also look at how you can document things for the next person to easily access this. So they can learn on their own. It has it's all set up in folders. It's well organized. As you might see, I am a very well organized person. I do not like. I do not like clutter. I do not like it inefficient. I want it streamlined and if we will put it together because there is so much work to be done. There is so much work. Why spend time fiddling around searching for something that somebody had in their memory? It should be documented. This is 2025. So this is that would be my objective and that has been. I talked to still people I used to work with and they know that I know where a certain folder is. And once I guide them to that, then they're like, oh, thank you. And then I don't hear from them for months or whatever it is. So um, that strategic planning is vital in today's world. And I I think that is something that I'm very good at. I'm very comfortable with. And I understand that not everybody is comfortable with it. So I know how to ease people in, teach them, get the resources that they need to be able to, one succession plan. And two, also find out if we can move new people up or what do we need to get them positioned for the next step up if they want to invest more of their life with this organization? Okay.
Counselor Constance.
You talked a little bit about, I think you used the word customer service focused or I got that from your resume. The fun thing about any community is if you get 100 people together, you're going to have, you know, maybe 98 different opinions. So.
A hundred.
You take, you know, a words like customer service focus and figure out how to get a community growing in the same direction on issues that are of vital importance to the town.
So customer service is really based off of your mission and your core values. And utilizing your mission, which by the way, and I'm not trying to fluff you guys up or anything, but I'm being very truthful and honest. Your mission statement that I saw at least on the HR website as far as the town, bolstering a culture of excellence and service to all the community by embracing diversity, encouraging inclusivity and building a profound sense of belonging. That is incredible. That right there is incredible because you are setting the tone, especially also with the ombudsman part in the charter as the TA's responsibility. That right there, all of those things sets the tone of how customer service is actually going to be formed and created. But what customer services is different for DPW versus the library versus other types of services, recreation and at all the other departments. And so what it is is really important is once you get those foundations and the core values of accountability, collaboration and customer services actually in your core values and innovation, you see how actually you are able to better identify what the purpose is for each of these departments. It is not up to the department heads to determine the purpose of them. It is the community's responsibility to tell us and you through your mission statement that then we identify, well, what does that mean for PD? And then it is as talk about performance measures and then review. It is my responsibility that they actually carry out the mission within the purpose of their department. So you talk about customer service. So then you set the actual grounds of what does that mean? What are the needs? What are the wants? Actually, what are the emotions that go with a service? And taking that in and then you train your actual employees to understand what does that mean? What does it mean for visually that you see a cop car in a Dunkin' Donuts drive through? It actually comes up with a stereotype or a barrier. There's all these things that actually employees need to understand because we are delivering a service to the community that has actually entrusted to us with their money and enhancing their quality of life. You say it right here. We need to embrace diversity, encourage inclusivity. So that is the TA's responsibility is making sure that the organization does that. And that's how customer service is actually delivered. When you set the foundation, then they can run with that and go.
Counselor Kine.
Depending on what Stacy just asked, our town charter is unique. Stacy and I both served on the last charter committee.
Yeah.
In the words ombudsman, it relates to the town administrator.
Yes, it does.
Unusual. It doesn't.
I have never seen it before and that was one of the things that I was like, sign me up. That is right there up my alley.
You're gonna love it. Because basically Steve embraced that. He met with everyone.
Yes.
And I've walked into the town administrator's office during the 17 years that I I wasn't serving at the time. And what he heard you wouldn't, it was tough to take. We were all bad. All the all the councils are selecting before that. They were no good. You gotta, you know. And you've got to walk that that thin line between following policy by the elected board and dealing with the public out there.
Yes.
And I'd love to hear thoughts on that.
Well, I'm no stranger to to negativity being spewed at me and also my employees. I can take it, but I will not tolerate it for my employees. If I hear it, I will address it and say that is not acceptable. And if you want to come back, have a timeout and come back with thoughtful discussion, great. But if you don't, then that's not the place here, especially I can utilize the mission. I that's why it's important to have the mission and the core values because it's not only for the employees to follow, but it sets the tone for the expectations of the community. For all of your boards and committees also how to behave. Because they are part of the organization. They are volunteers, but they represent. They are part of the brand of what you are trying to work for, for the future of this community. So I have no problem falling back on things that you have given me to fall back on. But also if there are challenges that are real sincere, such as that there is a there is a policy that has impacted them in a way that we actually haven't taken into consideration, then it is it is part of the responsibility of the town administrator to hear that out and and take notes and look at it from their perspective. That is what an ombudsman. But that also is what's most of the other divisions and and employees should be doing is the frontline, especially. There are wealth of knowledge of what feedback the community is providing you and how to make it better. Because that's really what everybody wants is to have better service, a better quality of life. It's better for them. They might not understand that it's not better for the 26 other thousand people or 27 other thousand people. But it's still important to take that in. And also let them know what the process is. Once they're educated on how process, how a policy or a decision was implemented, how a regulation has been implemented, they understand the process and we give them a path as to actually how can you change it? This is what you do and you can walk it through. It's it's that's the beauty of municipal government. Not too much is really set in stone. You can go to town meeting. You can petition an article. You can actually ask the community if they have support to change something that they don't think is aligned with what is important for the community. So that is really essential, having that understanding of the municipal government and being able to portray that to the this the community. Did I answer your question?
Okay, all right. Counselor Fox.
Do you ever want to practice dealing with union negotiations?
Yes.
Excellent. The follow up would be, can you explain the contract that was difficult to negotiate and how you were able to resolve it?
Well, we're still.
I'm sure you deal with many of them.
Still the only with fire. And we've also had agreements with some of our administrative unions. And then all of a sudden, after you've signed memorandum of understanding that they've decided to change it, even though we so. You just have to follow the rules that are outlined in the union handbook and and the collective bargaining agreement. And that's really what it comes down to. It's outlined in there for each of them. I believe you have eight or nine and and I've reviewed most of them. But yeah, they're pretty well descriptive as to what the process is. So I've had it. I'm currently dealing with it. I've dealt with it and well fleet in Yarmouth. I was on the actual collective bargaining negotiating teams sitting right next to the town administrator. So it was in all of those those moments. So.
Thank you.
Counselor Chrisley.
Hi, Liz. I've got a question about that's some of the development going on in Wakefield. So my question has to do with master planning. We have a master plan that's been under development. We have a housing production plan. We have a bicycle and pedestrian plans. My question is for you is twofold. How do you empower and manage the department heads to buy into one of these planning exercises? And how do you track progress towards a completion of different goals in one of these plans?
Well, that's where the performance review comes into play also. But I think the check-ins are really important, John, on that. And also you have to be going in on these plans and implementation and actually assigning tasks to different employees and departments. You have to go in understanding that they also have a mountain of work that is additional to now these plans that we have to implement. So some of them are actually mandated by the state. And we have to actually look at, speaking like time management, we have to look at how we can incorporate this into their their current staff load. Do they have enough resources to actually achieve what we're asking them to achieve? And if they don't have the resources, what does that mean? What does it look like? Is it more bodies? Is it actually more money that we need a consultant to help them? Or do we need actually to get? Do we need to get actual services to collect tax bills so then they can shift to another place? Or whatever it is, right? Health, food service permits or stable permits or whatever it is that somebody else can do and we can then assign them to a higher level task and doing. And then if we don't have the financial resources to pay for for something that requires financial resources, then what is the cost analysis of that? And is then my responsibility to bring that to either the finance team or to you and the finance committee and understand. So they have a full analysis of what the cost is associated with these asks. That is something that I have done always. And so we are going in a full transparent mode of how it is we're going to accomplish these things. How is it that we're going to put bike lanes in? Or I understand that you're considering even a complete the rail trail, which I've done and we're doing in Bourne, but I've done it for Yarmouth and Barnstable. And I know that your your town is dealing with an escalator of now $50 million for the two phases. Bourne is doing kind of the same thing. We had a $4 million price tag in December and now it's up to $10 million for half a mile. So what does that mean and what are the resources? Why is our town engineer spending so much time on something that hasn't been decided yet and moved forward? Those are the things that I need to to funnel out. And also it's very important with all of those, now to really get down to answering your question, the housing production plan, the master plan, the envision and open space and recreation plans. Those are all, they kind of have the same objectives in different ways and different like dialects. They say the same thing, but they are said in a different manner. So you have to see how you can actually, what are low hanging fruit? What can we achieve? And again, we go with metrics and is it? Is it affordable housing? Are we talking about 1% growth or open space and recreation? Do we are we looking for acquiring 1% more open space? Or is it businesses and economic development? Are we looking to assist the chamber in attracting 5% new businesses? What is it that we can actually achieve versus what really the end game is? So but you do that systematically and you keep it in the conversation. You don't let it drop because it is a priority of the town council.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor Chines.
Thank you. So shockingly, we haven't talked about money yet. And so I I do want to focus on this. So obviously, you know, we are entering into a time where, you know, governments at all levels, especially local governments are, you know, facing challenges we haven't seen in a while and, you know, difficult decisions that we'll have to make. Share with me an example of, you know, a difficult financial situation that you faced in any of the communities that you've worked with. You know, one where you had to make trade offs and difficult choices and, you know, potentially deal with a number of different competing interests in the community. How did you handle that? What were the factors that you looked at in terms of making, you know, what you you hoped would be the right decision for the community?
Yeah, very, very important, very relevant question, but also something that communities have not. It's not new and definitely not new in the 23 years I have worked in five different communities. So the affordable housing and the workforce housing diminishing and the impacts of economic the money coming in, the tourism possibly not happening and. The money coming in, the tourism possibly not happening in Provincetown was huge. And also having the sewer, uh, coming in with all of these other financial impacts. Uh, McMillan Pier was about to be, uh, redone, which was an exorbitant amount of money. And. Businesses, their, their rent in Provincetown back in two thousand two, two thousand three was thirty thousand a month. And then they were dealing with a thirty thousand abatement for sewer hookups. And they have literally three windows of time to make all of their money for the whole year. And they didn't have actually their. Their, um, seasonal help coming in from Haiti and Dominican Republic. And even then Eastern Europe. So they were without any help. And then of course we had rain impacting tourism. If it rains, nobody's going to come to the beach. So we were looking at a potential like businesses were going to collapse. And the tourism industry was going to collapse in Provincetown. So that was my first season. Then when I went to Wellfleet, the housing market crashed in two thousand seven. And a lot of second homeowners in Wellfleet, but also a lot of fishermen who had, um. Double, triple mortgaged their homes. It's a big fishing industry. So, and we were, we were dealing with the budget cuts and also school increases and overrides and all of that. And then, um, when I arrived in Yarmouth. I think this is starting to trail me then, I guess. And then when I started.
Hope not.
When I started in Yarmouth, the, there is a DY, uh, Dennis Yarmouth Regional School District. And the calculations for the, um, the funding formula was about to shift in favor of Dennis. It had been in existence for thirty years to Yarmouth's favor and all of a sudden it was going to shift the opposite. So it was forty percent, sixty percent, yeah, right? And now all of a sudden we were tackling a twenty percent increase and in the middle of the housing crisis still. People couldn't pay their mortgages and bankruptcy and foreclosures and everything. And we had to lay off nine employees, um, while also getting an override for the school. And we worked, and that was where I really actually had to work some magic. And we worked on retaining employees, shifting them to enterprise accounts, seeing where we could actually save their jobs. Working with communities to actually shift them into other towns even that had vacancies. That we could make sure that they retain their retirement. And that went a long way as far as Yarmouth goes. It was really an eye opener for me and set, um, set an important precedent of making sure that you take care of your employees in a way that it. Cause it is personal, it is their livelihood. So when we went to, when I went to Barnstable, then of course COVID happened in twenty twenty. And we had no idea what it was going to do impact wise for the Cape at the time. We actually worked with the unions and were able to negotiate a zero percent increase MOU. For all of the union collective bargaining agreements, um, to hold out to see how things were. And then every department slashed their budget by ten percent to accommodate. So no one had to lose their jobs. No one was going to be on the chopping block. Everyone took a hit. Because everybody was informed, Jonathan. That was the thing. We all knew, we all kept in the information. We knew what the impacts were going to be. And, um. And also on top of that, during twenty twenty, we were also in the middle of planning a one billion dollar sewer project. Which we knew was coming. We knew kind of the housing market was going to crash. We knew kind of that COVID was going to happen. We actually had six months in advance. It was happening in China prior to it actually coming to this, to this continent. We knew that it was coming. You can't keep your head in the sand when those things are happening. It is global and now especially today. So the same thing, we know, we are actually given an opportunity. We knew that things were going to start changing, that things, priorities were going to be shifting money wise. We know what's happening. So as long as we utilize the time with time management and prepare ahead of time and pull together as a unit. Then you can actually survive. But if you are not pulling together as a team, and it goes back to, again, everybody understanding the mission. Everybody pulling together, knowing the core values and what is really is at stake here. I think they will pull together. They know what's at stake. So.
Thank you.
So, you know, we have the same kind of groups that any time would have. So you've got your employees, your residents, your businesses, your volunteers.
Yeah.
I think where a little unique here is that we formed, um, previous TAs have formed good relationships with our neighboring towns.
Yeah.
Um, and we have a lot of like, um. Like municipal agreements with other towns and shared positions.
Um, and so all these people will be new to you.
Newer to you.
But all these groups as well.
Can you just talk a little bit about how you envisioned introducing yourself? And then how would you engage in communicating with all of these constituencies, whether they're internal or external?
In kind of the first couple of months, what do you think you would do?
Well, definitely reach out to them first and take that initiative, like extending. Pardon me. Yeah, so I would definitely extend and say, hi, I'm Liz. New TA, jazz hands, right? No, so yes, I would definitely identify who I need to prioritize actually introducing and getting into. And acclimating myself to the culture and the community. But it is definitely not something new. I've done it in every community. I have identified who I need to talk to. Also where I need to make sure that those relationships are super strong. And initiate those weekly meetings or every other meetings and once a month meetings. And also bringing them into teams and having them in the conversation. Um, and ensuring that even when I delegate it down to department heads or even division or program managers. That I, I make them fully aware of the relationships and the stakeholders and how they need to be involved. What degree of their relationship is vital to how they play and what, how they need to be participating. And, um, and when is it the right time to have them come to the table and be introduced to certain ideas and projects? So, um, that is very important. The first few months is, is. It is definitely where I need to be introducing myself and also listening and assessing everything. So then I can make the next plan of where I need to get everybody aligned with, especially your more up to date and recent goals. So I know that they, where do they need most help and alignment? And then be able to activate them as well as then be. And then we go into the performance management aspect of it. And then how do I make them accountable? And making sure that they have unclear expectations and understanding of the accountability. So those, those three months are absolutely crucial. So I will be inserting myself like. On the ground, rolling the sleeves up and yeah, putting in those efforts.
And then just part, I'm going to be Councilor Butler for a second. So like, be like, understand in person meetings.
Two parter question.
Really double, but like.
Communication tools that you use. So get one-on-one meetings or group meetings. But are you a newsletter person, like social media, like all communication tools? What do you think about those?
Depend, I, I think it's all great. Everything and everything. It depends on actually what you are trying to communicate though, and to who you are trying or whom you're trying to communicate to. If, if you scan my QR code that I put on, you'll see my website and, um, some of my examples that I put. One of the examples that is more recent is public participation plans that I did for the library plan. As well as the, um, for the recreation feasibility study that I'm doing right now with Bourne. And I have identified ways of communicating to people, not just me identifying it, but the boards that I have worked with. We have actually identified how best to communicate which constituents of yours that need to be having this information. So for example, library, you have seniors, but you also have parents. You also have children, you have tutors, you have real estate agents that are doing transactions there. You have all of these different types of people that are using the library. So how do you get their input? You go to the grocery stores, you utilize the school department. Because you should be having a good relationship with the school department because they are a department. You utilize their newsletters, you go utilize your, for here, WCAT. And you actually put, not just go on and get interviewed, but you also have visual images that go on the loop. And so they can see how plans are being placed and what is, projects are coming up and what meetings are coming up. And you use the branding of a certain project that you've already put together. And so they can identify it visually. You put it at the transfer station, you put it at the police station, you put it everywhere you can. You put advertisements in the newspaper. I'm telling you, I know exactly, like, i- if you put it everywhere because people will say, how come I didn't know? There will always be that, but even with Facebook and social media, I personally don't like to put my. I keep things separate. I don't share things out. And I like to have departments have them, but they need to be really close tight on social media channels. But it is really important that the ones that do have it, they push that information out. So they are fully aware also. Guys, here's a press release. I expect you to put it on in this amount of time and you're going to push it. You're going to push this information because you have, as a police department, you have fifty thousand followers. Or whatever, the rec department. So we put a plan together of how we're going to disseminate information. So I am, I even use A-frames. I use everything and I'm, I'm very comfortable with it. But again, it depends on what content that you're actually going to be disseminating. So podcasts too, I've done it all. Very comfortable with it.
That's great. Okay, I will offer a daily double if anyone feels the need for one more. I saw, I saw Councilor Chines.
Oh, okay.
No, tha- thank you. So, you know, just one other question, um, that I, I'd like to end with. Describe a time in your career where you've had to challenge the status quo. Tell us about the situation, you know, what it was, you know, what were the interests that you were, you know, going against? And, you know, how did you reach consensus and a conclusion?
There's a lot. A status quo is very interesting because it is actually pretty much a culture. Uh, it is a habit that has been ingrained, that has been a behavior that is allowed over time, whether it is acceptable or not. So you have to go forward when you are going to do any type of change. You have to go understanding what the impacts of it are going to be with a certain group of people or even one individual. How it's going to be impacted with them. And you have to be very delicate with that because they do take it personally. It's a change of habit, it's a change of, of tradition. That needs to be respected, but it cannot be hindering future growth. Of an organization in forward motion. I've had many examples of that, um, the library just recently, you know, those are. Uh, that's a hard conversation to have with some people, um, when they are emotionally tied to a physical object. Policies and procedures internally are also, um, the way that things have been done. That is hard for people to get over, but you have to take that very delicately and ease them into it. Or at least notify them and give them time to process it and also have an outlet for. Sharing their feelings and what they're exhibiting so we can do our best work to make them feel more comfortable through it. And say, I know this makes you uncomfortable, but this is what we're going to be doing. And I will make it as comfortable as possible for you, but you, you gotta get on board, like we're moving forward. So, um, and having those tough decisions and, and discussions. I have several examples and one of them is, um, even in my own, in Barnstable. When I shifted over from Consumer Affairs and Regulatory Services over to, um, to planning and development. I did not have a planning degree. And I was surrounded by planners who immediately my first day sitting, and I'm the assistant director. The director herself was even using acronyms that I couldn't even understand. And she did not make any accommodations to welcome me in. And it was constant pushing and pulling, but I was still, I still persevered because I was assigned to a task. That there were certain things and certain practices and standards of operation that I was in charge of correcting and making more efficient. So, but it got to, it, it did. We had some heated discussions, Jonathan, I won't lie. And, but I didn't know what the issues were until we had a face-to-face discussion. And she says, I don't know what to do with you, Liz. You're not a planner. And I was like, oh, that's it. I don't have the same degree as you. That's the problem that I've been fighting for three years. It's not me. It's that I just didn't fit in. So, um. So it is, it's hard. It, it's internal as well as external, but you know, you just have to understand that it, it sometimes it's just not personal. It's what it is and you have to figure out like, okay, now I know where you are standing. Now I know where you're coming from. Now let's try to figure this out because we are here to achieve the mission, the core values. And that's really what the, that's being a professional is all about.
Thank you.
Thank you so much, uh, for coming in and talking to all of us. As you know, we've been interviewing this week. And we'll be meeting on Monday to make a decision.
Okay.
We'll hear from John.
Yes.
Next week. And I also, I, I was, um, I took a moment. I also just wanted to introduce Sherry Dalton. Officer who keeps us all on track and.
Hi, I know your value very well. Yes, you are incredible. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate your time, everyone. This has been really a wonderful evening. Thank you. Thank you, John. Thank you, everyone.
Starting at seven fifteen again?
Can we take up, can we take like a five minute bio break? Sherry, is that okay?
Yeah, sure.
Can you play fun music for the?
I'll, I'll get creative.
Thank you. Yes, why don't we take a five minute bio?
Not going. I didn't need to know. Well, let's go find it. I think it's on the other side. The ladies room on the floor.
Good to see you. I call Stacy Mary. Thank you. Did I kick?
It's just mics.
Think you didn't know the room.
Yours is there.
Oh, there it is. Just got the one.
Hey, hello. Hi, thanks for joining us. And thank you for coming in and meeting with all of us. So that what we've been doing these is, um, we'd ask you to introduce yourself. Kind of highlight your, um, your experiences and why you applied for this position quickly, three minutes if possible. And then, um, we will do two rounds of questioning. So each councilor gets two questions. And we're hoping to end within an hour. So keep that in mind as you answer your questions. And then go ahead.
Excellent. Well, thank you, um, all for, um, inviting me in. So, um, Anne McGonigal Santos. I, um, professionally, uh, after law school, um, became an assistant district attorney for several years in Middlesex County. Um, which I think informs a lot of how I, um, run my business and, and my leadership. And, and, um, budgeting and all of that today with regard to negotiation and, um, mediation skills. After the DA's office, I joined Suffolk University as a faculty member. And then after several years, um, and for the past fourteen have been in, um, the dean of students' office. As, um, associate dean of students, dean of students, I'm at the executive level of the university, um, right now. On, um, many, um, boards and committees. And really have, it, it had done a ton of crisis management.
And really have it have done a ton of crisis management, have done budgeting, have done um personnel issues, like a lot of businesses um that are experiencing some tightening up. We've had some difficult choices to make um recently at the university as well. So why this job? I love my job, uh my present job. And was not looking until, you know, this opened up and I really thought about it. And I um love Wakefield. I won't offend the true townies in the in the town. I only moved here when I was five. Um, but have um been vested in this community even when I was younger. Um volunteered as a kid in junior high and high school um and decided to come back here to raise our family. Um, to buy our first house, my husband and I, to raise our family. And it's a town that I feel so strongly about. I feel strongly about the character of the town, the values that we espouse, the people. The changing nature of the town, I think, is something that's wonderful. Um, and I believe um although coming from within the town, I've certainly had so much experience outside of the town that I could bring. For this particular role, serving as town counselor for nine years is certainly um can assist me um in leading the town, um going through nine budgets, being chair twice, working with Steve so closely. Um, and my fellow counselors um to um institute policies to survive COVID. Um, so I do think that those skills certainly can translate very well into a town administrator.
Thank you. I'm gonna start counselor Bernie.
Anne, I I think I've known you due to my uh person age. I've known your family and you, long as I've known everybody else here collectively. I have to say uh benefit you late down and mom, they'd be very proud of you. I'm proud of you. You went through a process where seven citizens unanimously voted in by us. Made you one of their four finalists and I wish the best of luck and but then you're impressed and I'm proud of you. You might have read the an item letter from our good friend.
Yes. I'm not on social media, but I did read that letter.
And she brings up the loss of the PPP with when when Paul Reavis was here and left and would have you and the situation with the town planner. And so yeah, she asked, actually asked a specific question. I thought, given the press of that.
Absolutely.
Asked the question. That will call council at McGonigal the following question. You were on the TC February two thousand twenty. The housing production plan was not renewed by the uh town TC for an additional five years. If you are chosen as the next TA, how would you ensure that important deadlines are not missed?
Absolutely. It's, you know what? It's it's a valid question. It probably, it probably should not have been missed um by any of us. And I don't know if I was chair at that time. She may have her the facts better than I do. But um February twenty twenty was an interesting time because then March twenty twenty happened. Um, and we pivoted so quickly to just try to survive with COVID. But how, I think sometimes our policies go on a shelf and we don't examine them um so well. Vision twenty thirty is one that in reviewing that, there's such great aspirational goals there. But moving into the financial picture that I think we're going to be moving into in the next few years, a lot of those probably can't be tackled. So we have to have between chair of of town council, town council itself, myself have to have a very clear list of this is a policy, this is when it needs to be renewed. Do we need other people to sit at the table to look at that again? I don't think we do a five-year plan and look at it only at year one and year five because we have to be flexible. We have to examine when we need to pivot. Um, twenty thirty is one of those um statements, I think, that we could do still great things, but we would need to pivot based on the financial um landscape we're going into. So I appreciate the question. It probably should, obviously this should not have been um left to um not um be fulfilled, but during that time, right around February twenty twenty, um, we also were focused on the um foundry and um Albion Street corridors. Um, zone, changing zoning for those, um really pushing the eighteen percent um affordable housing. At um Tonoe was just being built and the state was so impressed that we ended up with a million dollar grant. Um, one time, but still. So we were focused on housing, but yes, the ball was dropped there and shouldn't have been.
Counselor Chrisley, I'm sorry, didn't introduce Counselor Chrisley. Hi, Sherry Dalton on the on the Zoom.
Good evening, Anne. So I'm glad they they started with that question because mine is is kind of a segue question. Um, as you are, I'm sure you're aware, being a longtime resident and council member, Wakefield's been undergoing not only the vision twenty thirty, but the master planning effort, the housing production plan, the bike and pedestrian plan. With your experience in Wakefield, how would you, how would you uh make sure that those plans are empowered and designated to, you know, the right department heads or the right working groups within town? And how would you track progress on those various plans?
Sure. So I think that um it wouldn't just be between town administrator and town council. I think many of those plans involve um DPW efforts, um other departments, recreation, that really we could have, I don't want to have committees just to have committees, but small, a small group of people could be dedicated to ensuring that each policy is being checked. Whether it's um monthly, whether we look at at what we are required to do under the policy and come back and say, this is realistic, this might need to be tweaked. But I think I I'm I'm a list person. I tend to be organized. I would, you know, I think having a policy um book isn't the worst thing in the world, that you can say, these are the policies that we need to look at to make sure that they are implemented. Because you're right, in reviewing the policies myself, um there are some that have have not been left behind perhaps, but in times of crisis, we may pivot to something else and we can't let that. We should, we can walk and chew gum at the same time. We should be able to maintain the um policies.
Thank you.
Counselor Fox.
Thank you for coming tonight. Um, I've had a few people reach out to me um in the past week. But the town charter um and the job description for town administrator that says, I won't read the whole thing. Um, five years full-time paid experience as a city or town administrator or assistant town administrator already. The three people going for this job right now are serving those roles. One, not quite long is the five years, but close. Um, how does your experience relate to those who are doing this work for other towns already?
So I think that third clause um that says other experience can equal um what the first two. Um, I would say, starting as a, being a lawyer, it is, I may, I'm not sure if I'm the only lawyer in the group, but being a lawyer means that I am trained to examine contracts, to look at things analytically. I think that is a tremendous skill to have in this position. Um, being assistant DA, being on my feet every day, uh negotiating, working with people who are not happy with me. Um, trying to come to deals with defense attorneys, with pro se clients in just that constant um being mindful of my role in protecting the rights, not just of the citizens, but of the defendant as well. Um, so understanding who my stakeholders are, and when I was a DA, I was mostly in Lowell and Framingham. And I was immersed in those communities. So we worked in the communities with regard to the youth. Um, youth violence, youth arson um in Lowell at the time. So I think that certainly gives me skills. Being on town council for nine years, um working on nine budgets, working with the department heads very closely. So I didn't just um sit placidly and and listen to the town budget presentation. I went to meet with Chief Sullivan. I went to meet with Chief Scory. Um, with Joe Conway to understand what they were asking. Um, so I think chairing for for two of those years, chairing during COVID, which was incredibly challenging, but I think Wakefield did better than most um during that time. So certainly my my experience as a town counselor. My last fourteen years as um and the executive team at the university has me running budgets, has me running personnel, um making some really hard decisions recently because of higher ed is is getting hit like everyone else. Very involved in the crisis management team, in the development of the crisis management team. So trying to get ahead of crises. Um, so we didn't end up on the Boston Globe. Didn't end up on Fox News. That was the goal. Um, but I think I, my hand is in a lot of the executive pots. Um, and I feel very comfortable in that managerial position.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Counselor Butler.
Sure, thanks, Anne. I think, you know, one of, one of the concerns, and I think both the previous questions have sort of addressed the, you know, the populist concerns around like, you know, whether or not um your background dovetails for this position. I'm more interested in, you spent nine years on town council, you spent nine of those years, we're all with Steve. In terms of thinking about how we're going to evolve as a town, let's talk about how, what things would you bring? You had more so than any of the candidates. You have intimate knowledge of the town. What would you think that the next steps for the evolution of Wakefield should be?
Absolutely. So I think in in, I know that this is beginning to change slowly. Twenty-one direct reports is way too many. And I think what that does is it almost silos people. So I would talk about reorganizing to give people perhaps more of an executive leadership role, to have more folks under some of those direct reports. I think that allows for better team building, um for people to feel good about that team they're on. So that's just a a small piece of reorganization that I think goes a long way. I also think there's some um updating that we can do. There's some departments that are still pen and pencil, uh paper, paper and pencil. We probably shouldn't be in the year twenty twenty-five with regard to pulling reports, pulling data. Um, I think there's software out there that we have that we should, we might need to nudge folks a little bit more to accept because there have been people here working for, you know, a long time. I think that's something that absolutely um can be done. So it's, it would be easier to talk about how to change things drastically if we, we were taking over a bit of a mess, but we're not. Steve has done a great job for um seventeen years. But I do think there's ways to look at how do we tackle the downtown differently? We've always tackled it as a monolith. It hasn't worked. I think we need to tackle it building by building. And Melissa just came down. Um, it it's, it's not an easy answer because we have private owners of those building that we can't force necessarily to do what we want them to do. Um, but I think looking at small successes as opposed to, you know, the the grand plan that we had, it was wonderful right before COVID hit of making the the street a little bit narrower, having bump outs. So people cross streets because I didn't realize that until the study came back. That our street is so wide that people talk about being lovely, but then no one crosses it. Um, so I think we can do small steps as opposed to looking at um the, a huge project um to take over. Oh, can I add one more?
Yeah.
So I think coming into this financial um these times, I would probably have more frequent meetings, earlier meetings and more frequent meetings with regard to between FinCom, um, myself, the department heads. I think that needs to happen based on potential nine C cuts that are coming that may not be as bad as we thought because of the state numbers and and the state has received some federal funding back. But I would do that a little bit more aggressively, just so we can better forecast moving forward on a budget.
Counselor Constance.
You referenced the changing nature of the town when you were just giving your intro talk. And I was incredibly struck by the public comments that came in, a hundred and fifty or so of them. I felt like the overriding theme overall, if we had to make one statement, was that um not conflict, but people's concern about, you know, a a a small town community that is beloved and change and how to reconcile those two things. So can you talk a little bit about that and what your thoughts are on that?
I mean, it's a little bit like the Jets and the Sharks, those two groups. Um, and I know those groups. I mean, that's one of the benefits of of growing up in this town. I I I understand that yearning to keep the town, that small vibe. I do not think we lose that. Um, a a two-second story, I can tell that it was, that always struck me is why Wakefield was so special is before the Galvin was fixed. Um, where we had, the kids had the cross in soccer and it was all um gated in. I had to quickly take my daughter somewhere and I remember standing at the gate and just yelled randomly, can someone watch Connor? I didn't wait for an answer. I didn't wait to see who was going to watch Connor. I just knew someone would. I mean, that, that, did I was walking to the car thinking, man, this is a good place to live. When I can just make that announcement and I know my son's going to be okay. You know, Stacy, I think people aren't as far apart as they might think they are. So I, Wakefield doesn't seem that different to me at this age than when I was ten years old walking down um downtown. I think we have to recognize that growth is a good thing, that diversity is a good thing. And if we could just get the Jets and the Sharks together without the knives, it might be a good idea. It's, you know, even the, when I first joined the town council, we used to grab a drink after meetings or grab coffee and and you got to know people outside of your ideologies and standing stiff. And it made for such a better communication, I think, moving forward. So we have to reach out to the people that are the loudest, I think, that are concerned about the change and and bring them to the table, ask them to come to the table. We have tried in the past. It hasn't always worked, but it has worked sometimes. So I think bringing those people together, maybe they realize we're not that far apart.
Counselor Chimes.
Thank you. So serving on the council as you have, obviously being in the town, um, you know, I I think you're familiar with, you know, how we've done certain processes. And one of the questions I've asked everyone um has been around performance management. Um, which from our time together on the council, I think you can probably understand is something that's important to me. I I'm going to ask you a little bit of a different question, given that, you know, you have some of the history. You know, talk to me, you know, both in regards to performance management of, you know, the town administrator with the town council, but also performance management of of town hall staff with the town administrator. Tell me about what you think we do well today, uh as well as what you think um we would need to change, what you would focus on if you were in the town administrator role.
So I think, and I know this was one of your babies for certain, Jonathan, um you had started it for us. I think the evaluation of the town administrator is pretty thorough. Um, there's, you know, still one posted. It might be from twenty twenty-three. But the areas of focus, the questions asked seem to really target what makes a good town administrator. Going into town hall, I think it is so important to have performance review that is consistent and transparent so that people understand where they stand. Where it can get tricky is with unions. So you can't impose necessarily a performance review standard that has not been um collectively bargained. But beyond, outside of the union, absolutely every department head should have fairly consistent rubrics. Now, there might be some changes, the tweaks that based on um who, what role they play. And then every employee under the department heads that is in a union uh member should also have a performance review. We we just, you know, embarrassingly, I think we started ours maybe three years ago at Suffolk. It is as helpful to me as it is to my supervisor, as it is to those I supervise. Because, Jonathan, I would have, it's something that's a bit of a living document. It's not something that you do for a year and then you should move on. So I think listing goals, listing achievable goals, when you think those can be met, how those are met. And then you meet with the supervisor to say, okay, this is where I think this lands. And then it has to be reviewed within. And then it has to be reviewed within, you know, three to six months, I'd say, because maybe something has changed. I know in my own, we had crises that popped up that shifted some of what we had to do. And that was okay though, cuz we could, we could be flexible in those goals. But, um, I think from a transparency standpoint, from an equity and, and pay standpoint, and everyone understands what they're doing, it is so important to have that, those, the top down.
Thank you.
So, uh, you mentioned working on nine budgets. I think I worked on six of those, didn't you? Um, so I say that budgets are really moral documents, right? They reflect our town's morals and our values and what we want to see in the town. Um, and we all kind of know we're gonna have some tough financial times coming up, um, based on the economy, what's happening nationally and what will happen locally. Can you talk a little bit about what in our budget you see as priorities, um, going forward? I mean, I know you know the process, but as we start the budget process in October, when we have our first tri board meeting, what do you see as kind of priorities that we have to find funding for?
For me, one priority has always been, um, whether it's level funded or to maintain police and fire. I think if you don't fund those well, you pay for it in spades, and we, we see some of that from our northern neighbors. Um, we have not had the problems that other towns have. I think because we have valued education of our first responders, um, we have given them decent pay. Can things be tightened up? Absolutely. I think overtime can be tightened up. Um, I think that's a leadership position, a leadership, um, leadership has to work on that. Um, but that's something that you can't avoid, but certainly can be looked at a little bit more closely. Um, but that, we avoid so many problems because we have such a good, um, fire and police and, and first responders. I think it's going to be incredibly important for us to meet with the school department early, earlier than we have in the past, FinCom as well. And to make sure that they understand that for fiscal year twenty-seven, I think it was projected that a four percent is what they're, they have to, to. Now, that's probably gonna be difficult since most of that is, is salary, but we don't have the luxury that we've had in the past. But that's conversations, that's relationship building. But I do think it has to start earlier and it can't be, you know, the school committee talking about it separately than FinCom talking about it separately than, than us. One tri board is great, but I do think we need to be a little bit more aggressive in, in looking at how this budget is gonna play out. Where else can we cut? I think we need to look very closely at things we absolutely need as opposed to things that are great. And what's the cost benefit? So we've done with regard to, is the social worker still full-time? Okay, that is something, is that, it, it has been so helpful in talking to folks who are, um, homeless in our town or struggling with substance abuse. If that were something we were to cut, I, I think that the cost would be too great. So I think we have to look very carefully at, you know, really line by line what, what we think we can do without, but still maintain services that are, um, our folks are expecting, our citizens are respecting. I, I don't know that we're there yet for certain fees that have been talked about in recent, um, year or so, um, such as a trash fee. That's, you know, a, yeah, a little bit of a nuclear option. But I, I think we need to look very closely at everything. Might have just canned my candidacy right there with that. But I think you have to be creative. You have to be open to, to see what can we do if we are going in for the first time in many years into a difficult financial.
Thank you. Council Carney.
This is the third time I've actually started on offices of, on boards of selection and now, and every time I do it, we have a budget crisis.
Maybe two.
But we, we tend to operate, and it's not a criticism, we tend to operate by attrition. Well, maybe we were to hold off right now on this position because, oh, this person's leaving, now it can forge. Um, and that's not really, that's not management. And so I appreciate what you're saying. The issue is, if, if all of a sudden we, I, I was suggesting that we go to zero-based budgeting, but not the stake that we're looking to cut. We're looking to restrain, we're looking to see where we might find some weaknesses, where we might be able to cut back, where, um, some contractual things could be done in-house versus, um, contracted out. What are your thoughts on that?
No, I think you're exactly right. I think we have to get together with the department heads. Sharpened pencil shows my age, but you know, everyone brings to the table, what can you do without? Without providing the services that our citizens are, are expecting. And you have to knock heads together. You just have to say, you know, can you find? And it can be aspirational, aspirational is not the right word, but it can be cuts that throw them on the table. Let's see what we can cut. Let's see, um, how we can get into, come into this budget, um, and still be strong. There may not be things that we thought we could do last year that we can do. You know, we'd have to look at capital very closely. Um, and I know we, we have been looking at that closely for several years. But it's gonna be tight. And I think we might have to do cutting. I'm hoping that it doesn't involve any personnel. I don't think we're there. I think you're right, we're not there. Um, but I do think we have to get the heads together and figure out what can we, what can we tackle.
Council Chrisley.
Uh, good evening, Ann. Um, I wanna follow up on, uh, one of the, uh, I guess it was Counselor Butler that asked the question about, um, the evolution of the town, um, and you talked about downtown revitalization. Um, you know, this council just got an update on the Envision, uh, project from the town engineer just this, this week, um, with major streetscape redesign from North Ave up to, uh, West Water Street. Um, I wanna know, what do you think about the changes in that particular section of Envision? Um, and do you generally think that's a, that, that's gonna be a good, uh, evolution for the downtown?
So I would think any of these changes are good, John. I'm not, I think we need to prioritize what we're gonna get most of our, our bang for our buck. Um, so from North Ave to West Water, what, what exit, what part are they talking about?
Uh, the scope, the scope of the first project goes from the intersection of North Ave and Main up to, uh, the intersection with West Water, uh, by Hearts Hardware and then
Okay.
three, three traffic lights down to meet up with the, um, the first section of the rail trail.
Yep. No, I mean, I, I think that's, that, it, it kinda goes along with what I was saying, that we have to look at it in small chunks. I think that's great. Hearts Hardware, their facade, their, what they've improved is such a, a nice entranceway to Wakefield right now. So having that improvement, um, a little snippet of it is the first step and then trying to do, um, to move downtown. Albion Street, to, every time I walk down it, I think it's, um, it looks so much better. It was a concrete jungle for years. There were trees there, there were flowers. It just looks so much more welcoming. So I think that would help. It's how do we bring those, how do we get those people? How do we get the people to downtown? How do we get the, the people, um, to visit? Um, I think those who live in town certainly do it. If you go out on a Wednesday or Thursday night, it is hopping downtown. But we can be creative and try to move some, you know, everyone talks about, how do we move people from the farmer's market to downtown? We've talked about that for ages. That is a tough one. Um, but fresh eyes are, are a good way to tackle these problems.
Okay, thank you.
Council Fox.
What is your vision for explaining information to the public in the council and what methods would you utilize?
So the, um, Jen McDonald's a magician. The, the website is phenomenal. Um, so obviously, the website is so much easier to, to search. Social media is very important. I would also have probably a bi-weekly, um, town administrator letter. I think just a synopsis, it might be packed with information one week and it might be a little light on others, but just saying this is what we're doing. I think we have to highlight what we're doing well, highlight what is going on in the town, what good things are happening in the town. So I think, um, my memory is people really liked the town, um, administrator letter. Um, that could be posted on social media as well as on the website. And, you know, with the transparency, which is so important. Um, we're one of the few towns that still has hybrid meetings. Um, most have gotten away from that. So that's something great we offer our, our community, that you don't have to attend a meeting, you can watch it or watch the recording that's posted within forty-eight hours. Um, so I think we're slowly doing, um, a, a better job, not, not even slowly, we're doing a better job of getting information out there. And so with social media, I would just, I know people are on Facebook, but I would use all, you know, if we wanna capture anyone under the age of thirty, we need to use something other than Facebook, first of all. Um, but we just have to be creative about that. Um, but I do, I, I love the idea of, um, the, um, reinstituting the town counselor, to, uh, strike that, the town administrator, um, letter. And then with communication between town administrator and the board, I, you know, I kind of open door, making sure that you're aware of, that, that you're never blindsided. I, as, as a supervisor, as a boss, um, although you are the boss of the town administrator, I never wanted to be blindsided with something. I wanted to know everything. Um, and I think that's where those in the beginning, weekly meetings with department heads, um, and, and maybe bi-weekly with, um, other folks to find out what's going on, to find out if there's any crises, and then delivering that to you folks, so you know.
Great, thank you.
You're welcome.
Council Butler.
Sure, I think, um, and I think you've, you've, uh, you've faced the unfortunate aspect of being like local and known to us. So like, we've asked you very detailed questions on like tactics. I think I really wanna know sort of understanding, and I've asked this of the others as well, in terms of, how do you handle bringing up the people underneath you? How do you handle mentoring? How do you handle developing both, you know, new and junior staff as well as seasoned people? And then also how, how are you planning on hiring? How are you building, building your team?
So I love that aspect of my job. I always have. I've been a supervisor at every step of my, um, profession. In the DA's office and, and certainly in the, um, at the university. And I think my leadership style is that I'm not the smartest person in the room, that I do not know everything, um, and that I wanna hear from everybody. Now, the buck would stop with me, but I've also, to my detriment sometimes, I would argue, um, have never taken the wins by myself. It is a team effort. So I think to mentor younger or less experienced people within the organization, to let them know they have a voice, to let them know that there is never a question that cannot be asked, that their supervisor or I would have their back, um, even if a mistake is made. Now, that doesn't mean behind closed doors, you might say like, what the heck were you doing? But to support people, um, I think training is important. So, um, I'm not aware of if there is consistent training happening, um, within the town hall. But, but training's a good thing. It's good to learn, um, it's good to learn, um, see your job from a different lens sometimes. Often, it's good to know that we're doing best practices. That's when I've gone to trainings, I'm like, alright, we're doing okay, because this is what I'm, I'm hearing from the trainers. But I, it's kind of the, the cliche of leadership, but I'm incredibly collaborative. Uh, I, I'm not someone who would ever put someone down. I'm not someone who would call a, a suggestion um, not appropriate. So I think to give people the confidence, younger people the confidence in the trust in me, that I will listen to them, that I will support them, and to make sure that department heads are all on that same page, so that people are treated civilly, people are treated respectfully. Um, and that anyone can go, um, to their supervisor with concerns that will be addressed. Hiring. So in a lot of our departments, we have, we have a decent succession plan, um, that I know we started several years ago thinking about, um, as, as people were aging. So I would, I would look, I would look for the best, whether that's within the town or outside of the town. I think we've made some recent hires that I'm very excited about, um, that I think are bringing already a lot to the table with regard to, uh, when Kevin ultimately le- leaves, the person that may take over that position, uh, the town planner, um, that started. So I feel like we are in good shape right now, pushing forward.
Council Constance. You're one of the only candidates that has like crisis management experience and I, that's an area I don't, I'm not familiar with. What kind of skills from that piece of your world translate into a town administrator role?
So, um, a good crisis management team will prevent the crisis from blowing up. So I think, um, you have dedicated people on the crisis management team, and it's gonna be mostly department heads. It's gonna be Jen McDonald, communications is critical on, on the crisis management team. Joe Conway, Steve Scory, um, Mike Sullivan, or any of their designees. Um, but just to touch base with that team to ask, is, do you see anything happening? Do you see anything coming down the pike that you're concerned about? If the team is in place, when a crisis happens, you know, everyone's, um, knows what to do. So we had the, um, at one twenty-eight.
The morgues.
Yes, right. Talk about crisis intervention. I know that Tom Walsh was on that. I was in touch with, um, with Steve Mayo at the time. Uh, they, as a team, they also know how to go outside to stakeholders. So does state police need to be involved? Does someone else need to be involved? But if you're just making it up as you go along, it doesn't work. So a crisis management team has to meet outside of crises and just to say, okay, this can happen. We had, um, we went through drills. We went through tabletop drills that were fascinating, real life, um, to know what would happen if one of our buildings, um, was impacted and we had to move a bunch of students and it was dangerous, and how do we deal with parents? How do we deal with the press? Well, I can imagine that happening. What if something happened at Brightview? Where would we bring Brightview? Where would we bring those folks? Um, would we know how to do that? And I have ideas on, on where that could happen in, in a quick way, but those are things that the crisis management team does. So when a crisis happens, you, you hit the ground running.
Council Chimes.
Thank you. Uh, looking back on, on your nine years on the town council, what would you say is the biggest missed opportunity from those nine years? And as you kind of look ahead, if you were in the town administrator role, um, whether it's that or something else, like what, what's the one thing that you'd most like to tackle and address?
Missed opportunities. I think sometimes you get a little comfortable in the status quo, because things are going well, you're not getting a lot of complaints. Um, one of the things I would like to tackle, um, Jonathan, is, and I read this in all the surveys, people love the idea of community events. I know we have porch fest coming up in, in the not-too-distant future. So to try to bring some of those back, but that's Those community events. Were trickier than people believe because a lot of the businesses didn't like them. The businesses did not get business during the community events, so how do we do something that can embrace the businesses to make them successful? But to have people come down and just have fun. To, to block off maybe not all of Main Street, but a little part like we had done. I think that goes an awful long way, Town Day is so successful, I know folks just met about that. But that gives you pride in your community, it gives you a sense of really wanting to be here, it spans the generations. So I do think trying to be a little more creative in how I do that. In not. Turning off. Some of our businesses, which in the beginning of some of our events, unfortunately that happened.
Thank you.
Yeah, you are getting tougher questions because.
That's okay.
And so. You know, we all and you all worked with Steve and Steve was great and he did this for seventeen years. And it was more than a nine hour a day job, you know, it was twenty four seven, so for him and his wife and family. Can you talk a little bit about, you know, what are your plans for five, ten years? In this job and your commitment, yes, you live in town, but, but you know, I think there was, I, I don't think twenty four seven is actually. Sustainable, I don't think that was a good model. You can't have somebody who doesn't take vacations and doesn't, you know, works all the time and it's not good modeling for teens and stuff, so can you just? I mean, yes, also your five to ten year plan, I hate that question, I was about asking you.
That's okay.
And then just, you know, in, in terms of leadership and being the TA of the town, kind of what is going to be your leadership style and management style in terms of. Being approachable and, and communicating with everyone.
So I think. I, I. I can't see seventeen years, but I can see ten years, absolutely. I feel. Other than my, my recent little. Pickup with an illness, I feel great and I feel excited, this is. It feels like a job that is coming full circle for me. I have to do a better job myself. At twenty four seven, taking vacations and modeling better, that's how. My job right now is that, unfortunately, it's, I am available all weekends, I am available on holidays because. If a student is in crisis or there's something major that happened, I have to be involved in that. So, but your point, Maureen, is so well taken because I don't want to model that for people below, that might be how I. Work and I need to, to get better at, at some of those boundaries, but I think it's important. To have some separation, although clearly living in town. You're more available. And, and that's. That's okay, that's, I, I wouldn't have. Applied if I thought that was going to be a problem. With regard to my leadership style, like as a town administrator to. Other folks, Maureen, not. Town Hall or like, yeah.
Yeah, so. Community members.
Exactly, I have always had. Open door policy, I have, I'm in charge of thirteen hundred students and, and they'll come in. With. All different kinds of issues. Now, that doesn't mean that I can't say I won't meet with you, let's set up another time, but I'm certainly going to be someone who will be available. For folks. Available to have conversations. We may not always agree on every conversation, but I think even as, as when I was town councillor. I remember voting against. Voting a no vote to folks that I really cared about and liked, that were, that were hoping that it would be a yes vote. And because I was transparent, because I explained why I was voting no, I never felt pushback, I never felt. Like someone was angry with me for a position I took because. I, I don't know any other way to be honest and transparent and just myself. Maybe a little bit too much sometimes, but I think people understand that I'm doing my best to, to try to help them. I might not always be able to help them, but can I get to the right person?
Thank you.
Okay, I will offer a daily double.
Councilor Carney.
And this year when they were presenting the capital plan, I've asked them, I hope it carries forward to come up with a five year plan. They're talking about, well, this is coming down the line, this is coming down the line, I think we all have everything on the table. I also think in these tough times when you're talking about reorganization and we've always talked about, I should, so I always. Had the usual, the, the deputy. Now, it's very, has come up. I, I think that's. Poor decision right off the bat. I think you could think about that, but I've often wondered if you had. Steve reportedly had twenty one reports. You could structure them differently. So that, so that a couple, you know, your forum would report to someone else on like kind of tasks.
I absolutely agree with you.
So, I mean, I'd like to look at those strategically first because especially during these tough budget times. I guess that wasn't the question.
No, I, I, I can call it a question. John, I can call it a question. Would I be rushing to hire a deputy tomorrow? No, I would not. No, but I think that's important, I think to look at restructuring might take some of that. That. That weight off of just that one person, so especially going into these times, completely valid point.
Well, thank you so much for coming in. You were the. Do you want more questions?
I do, you know me.
We'll just, because we're only at.
I know, we ended, okay, go, go ahead.
And this is more like thinking about, like, we are a town and we have had leadership and we probably as leaders. A lot of times we break our arm patting ourselves on the back. About like, you know, we, we postulate what a great place to live. And it's, sadly, see, I'm going to eat up the ten minutes. Two-part question around like.
I got you, I'm following you, Doug.
Around A, you know. What, you know, what is your idea of like? In terms of moving us to truly be a, like we have, we have very average schools, we have very average, most everything, we have very average downtown. We have, most of our services are eh, average or maybe slightly above average. And that may be just who we are and that's okay, we can like own that and be comfortable with that. But. What would your thoughts be in terms of moving us past that, moving us advancing the ball there? And then the other thing is, is, you know, in terms of your candidacy, you are probably the riskiest candidate for the seven of us. You, we are, you are the candidate who we probably face the most backlash if we go with. Can you address that?
Sure, so I, my goal is to not be average, first of all, I don't think we need to shoot for mediocrity. The new high school, I think is going to do wonders to just up the entire educational system, I think it's going to flow up. My kids went through the school system, got some great education, but I, I appreciate what you're saying. We do things well, can we do them better? Why not? And how we do that is to just, again. Bring people together and ask them for new ideas, I think we have been going along, status quo is not, not a, that's not a great term, but. We've been okay, we've, like you said, we've been patting ourselves on the back. I think we can stop doing that and I think we can think about how do we. Get things better, that. Revitalizing downtown bit by bit is going to be a huge part of that, the new high school is an absolutely huge part of that. Second question, facing the biggest backlash, well, I mean, how tough are you? I just think I, I would have to, I think you need to go look. And talk to some more people maybe. Because. I've certainly heard a lot of positive. Enthusiasm about my potential.
No, I'm, there's, you know, it's just, it's, it's.
It's risky, no, one hundred percent, because I'm not a former town administrator or an assistant town administrator and I'm viewed as the. You know, in-house candidate, which I think is silly, I don't consider myself an in-house candidate, but I'm certainly from the town. I just, I think. Give this my all, I know I can do it, I have been successful at every position I've held in the past. I'm, I will have left positions. On a great ground and I can't imagine not doing the same level of intensity and good work for this town.
Okay, with that. I, I'm calling it.
Making the call, thank you so much, you know, we refer people this week, we are meeting on Monday.
To deliberate and so you will be hearing from John or us next week, but thank you so much for coming in.
Absolutely, thank you all.
You.
Thank you all.
Okay, and with that, do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second, great, and for Doug, for Doug's benefit, we're going to do a roll call vote, John Chrisley.
Yes.
Councilor Constance.
Yes.
Councilor Butler.
Yep.
Councilor Fox, Councilor Chines.
Yes.
Councilor Carney and myself, that's seven to zero to adjourn, we'll meet next on Monday. August eighteenth at seven PM at our normal location at the WCAT studio, thank you all, meeting adjourned.
Thank you.
Thank you.